Oh, perfect, yes.
Yep.
Welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 5:30 to discuss anticipated negotiations of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and the Bethlehem Principals Association. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I see we have some participation in government, students? Your last opportunity, right?[49.62][49.62](laughing) Before the end of this semester. Your requirement is that you stay till 9 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9, we'll take a break. You'll need to come up and sign out. There'll be sign-out sheets, and if you have any sheets that need to be signed by board members, we'll gladly do that for you. And if the meeting ends before 9, just come up at that time to sign out. We'll start with introductions.
Christine Beck.
Michael Cooper.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Widgesinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Diane Seaver.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Joanne Cunningham was in executive session with us. She had to run a personal errand, and she'll be back for the remainder of the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2015 regular board meeting?
Some of second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Next, Student Senate report.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Cato, and I'm the president of Student Senate. On Student Senate, we're currently working on the Snowball Dance, and that will be held February 7th at 7 o'clock. We're pre-selling tickets so that we make sure we have enough interest, and we need 300 by the week before, and it's $10 per student. We're having guest DJs, which will be students, and they will be announced closer to the date. And we're also having students ask other students to go, to create an initiative for students to go to the dances, because the dances turnout has been very low over the past couple of years. And before Snowball, Homecoming was a big success because girls ask guys. So instead of doing girls ask guys, we're just doing open asking. So girls ask guys, guys ask girls, goes group. And then on February 25th, we're going to have our second student forum at 207 in D-122, and Mr. Landry will be there. And that's all for right now. We're going through a slow period, but after that, we will have Mr. Bethlehem, and we're also working on a community event.
Anyone have any questions?
Do you know how many students have bought tickets so far? Do you need a minimum of 300?
Yeah, only four have bought tickets so far.
Oh, no!
But many students have asked other students, so they are planning on going, but they haven't bought tickets. And we think that's also because of midterms. So a lot of people are using their free periods to study, and after school, they're going to teachers. So we're hoping that after midterms, things will pick up their pace. And that's what happened for Homecoming as well. At the beginning, no one wanted to buy tickets, and then they started asking, but no one actually bought the tickets until the week before.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any idea why the turnout has been so low the last few years?
I think it's because students don't want to be supervised by adults of the school. They would rather be doing things in their free time that they don't need parental supervision or school supervision, and things may not... They're against the school code in many cases. So I think that's the problem, and I think that students just don't want to pay the $10. But if we give them a time that they will truly enjoy by having prizes or having chaperones that they really like, I think they'll spend the $10.
I think sometimes it's changing the culture. If the culture of the last couple of years has been, "No one goes," it sounds like you're trying to create a culture where this is a fun event and everyone should go, so...
Yes, and it's also the senior class. If you get the senior class interested, then the juniors will be interested, sophomores and the freshmen. But if the seniors don't like anything, it travels down to the rest.
But the Girls Ask Guys was a success, so maybe that's the key.
It was. So we're going... We don't want to take the homecoming theme from them, but the open asking is somewhat taking in.
And it's open to all four grades, freshmen through seniors, and it's at the high school?
At the high school.
I have just a question. If you have a sense of how students are doing as they prepare for exams, going into exam next week, next week, any pulse of the school on how are kids talking a lot about exams? Is there a high-stress level as far as you can tell, or is it normal, or...
I think students are very stressed, and a lot of students are using their free periods to actually study rather than going out or getting lunch. And I think that's also because, for the seniors at least, college is a very stressful time period, and most of the colleges require mid-year grades, so that's a big thing. And then for the freshmen, they're new to the whole complete midterm schedule, so I think that's going on as well. And the stress of college is now moving down to the lower grades, and everyone's being interested in college earlier because they have siblings, and college is very rigorous and requires more rigorous courses. So I think, right now, everyone's pretty stressed. But there's also initiative by another student, and she will propose it to you guys later on in the year to figure out stress-reducing techniques and exercises to deal with the stress.
Thank you.
I heard yoga's good.
Yes.
Especially hot yoga in the pool deck, right?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Chelsea, the forum that you have, do you have the topic of it at this point?
No, we have not created a topic. We will first say whatever we'd like to speak about. So the first meeting, we did bullying, but then we gave the floor to the students and let them bring up a topic that they want to talk about. But last meeting, they stuck to bullying, so we may continue doing the bullying topic, because a lot of kids were interested, and they have very valid points.
How's the response been?
They loved it. All the students thought it was really progressive of us to do that, and they liked that they were able to talk to some of the administration members in a calmer environment, and they were able to really speak out in a respectful way as well. And I think even the administration got a lot out of it, and I think it's very productive. And Student Senate members are required to be there, but we also had an additional 20 other students coming. So if students heard that the other one was successful, I think we'll have more on February 25th.
Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
The next is the Superintendent's report, and also, I would like to thank Glenmont Elementary School. This is where tonight's meeting is being held. I'd like to thank the administration and staff here for hosting us. As part of our agenda as a school board this year, we had decided we wanted to go around and visit each of the elementary schools, the high school, and the middle school and the high school, as part of our kind of roving tour as a board. So thank you to Glenmont for hosting us tonight. Dr. Douglas?
Thank you, President Downey. It's my pleasure to just update the board, as well as the community, on a couple items in regards to issues that we've talked about at previous board meetings. One of them happens to be the proposal of a power grid station by the high school in Eagle Elementary by National Grid. We have been informed by National Grid because we did reach out to National Grid to possibly do a presentation to the board so that the board could ask questions, as well as any other related community member, for February 4th. However, we did hear back from the representative from National Grid that unfortunately, they cannot make that date for some reason in regards to company's structure and getting the individuals here. We would hope that with almost a month's notice that that could have been arranged, but they did assure me that they were going to conduct a couple of open houses prior to the potential zoning board of appeals meeting on February 18th, which will be during our break. Although, we did caution that that is a time when a good portion of the community may be away, that, you know, I will represent the board at that meeting, as well as any board members that are here that would like to attend. I'd love to have company, as well as the community, should be available to attend that meeting, to also pose questions, as they're looking at changing the potential core residential zoning of the neighborhood to more of an, I believe, an industrial with a variance for height, to be able to propose that power grid station. So that's something I would encourage the community and the district and the board to really pay attention to in the next couple of weeks, and definitely over the February break. So please pay attention. We'll also S&amp;N out any information that we receive in regards to any open houses or the zoning board's meeting times. It was my pleasure over the past two days to listen to the State of the Union address, as well as the State of the State address today by Governor Cuomo. It sort of brings up some unknowns in the coming weeks as we head into our budget season. We will be proposing the State of the School address, as well as our budget rollout at the February 4th meeting, but that will also be based on some of the lowest numbers that we could see from the governor's budget proposal that were rolled out today. Although, it does have the ability, depending on the aspirations of the policies within the budget, to go forward to raise investment in education. There are some pros and cons to everything, but it's sort of a wait-and-see that we will have to. So we will probably take the worst-case scenario, and then hopefully improve from there throughout the budget picture. So I just wanted to update the board on that, as well as the community.
Can I just add to that, since I was down there today, you know, for the address? And I just wanted... What the governor was actually speaking about a specific amount, he's putting in a 1.7% increase in state aid funding, which is just 377 million, which really, over the whole state, is really very little. And if he gets his way with his reforms... Now, these are reforms to professional teaching and increase the standards for teaching, strengthen teacher evaluations, reward excellent teachers with performance pay, transform the state's failing schools expeditiously but fairly, remove ineffective teachers, expand charter schools, and pass the educational tax credit, continue support for four-year-old pre-K, and initiate a three-year-old pre-K. And he put money for those individual things, but unless the legislature actually passes those, or if they did, then he would give an additional $1.1 billion, or a 4.8% increase in state aid to schools. So he's kind of... I don't know whether he's trying to strangle the legislature. He says we can work together and resolve these, but I think it's going to be a very difficult legislative session. So it's going to make the budgeting process, like you said, very difficult.
And I would add that advocacy becomes more important at this time from all of us as the community of Bethlehem Central. Whether it's administrators, teachers, support staff, parents, and even students, especially our PIG students, this is the one thing that is the most admirable quality about participation in government. It's your voice, whether you see it one way or the other. Participate. But that's what we're going to probably be asking, because we feel, and I think the board would join me in this statement, and I think parents in the community would join us, too. We have a wonderful staff, we have an outstanding educational institution, and we produce some of the highest quality of students going off and hopefully coming back to the area for their careers. To be lumped in a one-size-fits-all category is very difficult to understand, but it's also something that we have to make sure the legislators, our elective leaders, make sure that they don't harm with unintended consequences trying to create a one-size-fits-all system. So, you know, I commend our staff, I commend our students and our communities, but I hope, as we send out the S&amp;Ns and we put together our legislative lobby teams, that you will join us on those when you have time, and also write on our behalf to hopefully embolden our legislators to stand strong on the fact that education is the way that our economy truly prospers. So that's what we're hoping for in the future. So I think that's where the board has made its statements before, and I hope that is what we stand for as a community, so... But that, I mean, the things will play out, and I think, as Ms. Lenhart said, I mean, it's going to be an up and down next probably six weeks, I would say, good six weeks. And, you know, patience is going to be our virtue, but also discussion points and making sure that we present what we do as a profession for our students, and why we need to continue doing this for the betterment of the great state of New York. To sort of go off on some others, we have some of the pride that happens in Bethlehem. And what happens, this happens in a lot of schools, but definitely happens from year to year here, as the great organizations that we have often provide support for what I know this board and this community would like to always fully support, and we appreciate those donations when they come forward. I know that our department supervisor, Mr. David Norman for the music department, is here tonight, and he's going to also have our BMA, Bethlehem Music Association President, Mr. Alan Goldberg, as well as Ms. Leslie Chu, the membership chair, come forward and make a presentation to the board at this time.
The music people work with the microphone so well.
Let's have a drum roll.
Thank you. The Bethlehem Music Association, of course, provides really outstanding support to our department, really our K-12 department, every year, throughout the years. And one of the most, perhaps the most tangible legacy that the BMA can provide to our department is in supporting our equipment acquisition. Musical instruments are expensive, and they age, and especially some of our larger instruments eventually reach the point where they can no longer be repaired. And the BMA has committed itself to helping us as a department and a district replace some of those instruments and acquire some more specialized instruments as well. So I know that Mr. Goldberg and Ms. Chu are here to help complete a transaction with the board that will make it possible for us to acquire some more musical instruments for our high school department. So I will invite Mr. Goldberg to say a few words.
We come bearing a very big check. I've never done one of these big check presentations, if I'm very excited about it. I don't want to repeat what Dave has said. I do want to say that, you know, our firm view is that the district's music program is one of the things that makes the Bethlehem Central School District so extraordinary. And we really, you know, we've seen that particularly, many of us on the board have children who have gone, you know, K through 12, and we all have somebody, at least one, still in the program. And so we really want to thank the Board of Education for its continued recognition of the invaluable role that music education plays in the overall educational experiences of our children. I'll tell you, for me, we do a lot of different things. We contribute, obviously, to the annual music festivals. This year, we've got the Orchestra Festival coming up, too, in class programs. We subsidize students participating in regional and statewide music programs. But for me, this is the most exciting thing we do, because we leave... To be able to help the district purchase instruments and put them in the hands of students feels really concrete to me, and it's very exciting. So with that, it's my great pleasure to invite Leslie Chu over. Turn that check the right side up, Leslie. All right.
You got to turn it over.
Other way.
You got it upside down.
To represent the BMA as we formally present a donation of $6,780 to the district, which will be used to purchase a French horn, a string bass, and a bass clarinet for use at the high school. And before I conclude, I just want to acknowledge and really thank Dave Norman for the work that he does, not just as supervisor of the department, but in particular, for chasing down these instruments and making sure that the money is used effectively and is really maximized. And so with that, I guess we will take a picture of some sort.
Board members?
Well, we certainly thank the BMA for that wonderful donation and all their hard work on behalf of the students of Bethlehem Central and the community. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, also part of my presentation is to relinquish some time, and I'd like to invite Ms. Laura Heffernan, the principal of Glenmont Elementary, forward as she presents with her fellow instructional staff, Ms. Val Falco, Ms. Laura Bowerman, and Mr. Andy Baker, in regards to our writing instruction and K-5 presentation.
Can I just ask, as you set up the presentation, because of the acoustics in this room, if anyone who's making, speaking, making speaking remarks, if they could go right to the mic to facilitate my hearing and everyone else's? Thank you.
Is this good? Can you hear us? I'd like to welcome Dr. Douglas, Ms. Monroe, Ms. Kehoe, the Board of Education, and our community members to Glenmont Elementary School for our Board of Education meeting. As the board has gone on the road, at each of the elementary schools, they have been... We've been addressing the different curricular units that the elementary schools have in place, and we have been tasked with a writing program. So tonight, we're going to be presenting about our writing program here at Bethlehem K-5. And to join me in this presentation, I have Val Falco, Lauren Bowerman, and Andy Baker. And we're going to start with a PowerPoint to tell you a little bit about our program, and then we have a short video about six minutes long, where you'll get a chance to hear from students and staff about the writing So first, I'd like you to just start by thinking about what a complex task writing really is. If you're a four or five-year-old coming into school, you have to learn your letters, you have to learn the sounds, you have to learn how to put the letters together to make words, you have to learn how to write the letters or type the letters to produce written text. Then you have to put them together into sentences and paragraphs, and that involves a lot of grammar and punctuation, choosing the correct words, finding the right words. Then you put paragraphs together. You have to think about the different contexts for your writing. Are you writing a friendly letter? What does that format look like? Are you writing a research paper? What does that look like? Then there's the higher-level thinking skills in which you have to decide, how are you going to address your audience? Are you going to be direct, perhaps for a report, or are you going to be more subtle if you're writing an opinion piece? There's so many things. Writing is such a complex task. So I took the liberty of quoting some famous writers here about what they think about writing, and just how hard they thought it was, and they're obviously expert writers. My favorite, perhaps he's not an expert writer, an expert comedian, Steven Wright said, "I'm writing a book. I've got the page numbers done." I think we all feel that sometimes when we're trying to sit down and write. A few years ago, the Common Core state standards came out, and they stated that we, as educators K-12, need to teach our children three different types of writing. We have to teach narrative, informational, and opinion writing. And they also told us what this should look like, so they provided a number of appendices to the Common Core. And if you have a chance later to Google Appendix C, you can take a peek at what they say, an exemplar piece for a kindergarten student is, for a 12th grader is. And I have to say, as a principal, when I first looked at some of these exemplars, I was a little overwhelmed. The kindergarten piece was a full page, very well-written and constructed. Even, you know, looking at a second-grade piece, it was an informational report on Spain. It was three pages long with headings and lots of details, and, you know, lots of vocabulary, and it was overwhelming. Here at Bethlehem... Well, actually, let me just step back for a minute. So we have a complex task writing. We have extremely high standards that we're expected to reach, and there's a lot at stake here. Lucy Cawkins here in this quote, she's the lead researcher and professor of the Reading and Writing Institute at Teachers College at Columbia University. She stated, "It has become increasingly clear that children's success in many disciplines is utterly reliant on their ability to write. So the stakes are high for us, because writing instruction will impact how a child does across the curriculum, both throughout their schooling and throughout their life." So here at Bethlehem, we've had kind of a different way, different ways of teaching writing. It hasn't always been consistent in the past, across the schools, across the classrooms. Teachers pulled resources from different places, including Teachers College. Some teachers went down to Teachers College. We used their resources. We even had presenter Iseke Nia from Teachers College 10 or 15 years ago. But again, this writing instruction varied across the classrooms. And then Teachers College came out with these new units of study. This is one grade level. This is fourth grade. And the ELA cabinet took a look at them and said, "This is quality material. This is something that we would like to implement in our elementary schools." So we adopted these new units of study in the 2013-14 school year, so this is now our second year of implementing these units. So to tell you a little bit about what this program looks like, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Val Falco, who is our literacy coach here at Bethlehem, and also a third-grade teacher at Glenmont.
So what hasn't changed and what has stayed, what's changed? So we've always believed there needed to have... I am. I am? Oh, okay. So we've always believed in explicit instruction, and I think sometimes people look at writing workshops and they say, "Where's the grammar? Where's the spelling?" And it's all embedded in all of the lessons we do. And that's always been the case, but I think it's much more apparent now. If you were a parent and you took a unit, you could see all the different lessons that have to do with spelling, grammar, the conventions, as well as the craft you would need for a narrative, an information piece, or an opinion piece of writing. Every grade level, it's expected there would be 50 to 60 minutes of instruction. In kindergarten, we're at about 45 in the beginning of the year, the same with first grade. But it's amazing how early on, they're writing for 15, 20 minutes on their own at the beginning of kindergarten. So those two pieces, you would see almost every day. The emphasis on helping kids understand the whole process. It's not just, "I'm going to give you a prompt, you're going to write to the prompt," but you're going to go through the process, the process that authors go through. We have mentor texts, so they begin to see, "If that's what the author's doing, I can do that, too." When it says self-selected topics, I think people hear that, and they think kids write about what they want all the time, but they're writing about the topics they want within narrative. So every child K-5 will write a narrative piece. Every child, actually more than one, will write some kind of information text, and everyone will do some kind of opinion writing, which is very funny to look at kindergarten opinion writing, because it's usually directed to the principal, and they want more recess, more playtime, something like that, but they're very opinionated about it. So along with instruction, there's a strong period of practice. Kids practice, they try it, they try it again, they try it again. And we look at, over the course of about six to nine weeks for any one unit, and they're going to produce... Our kindergartners might produce 15 or 20 pieces of writing during that time. If you get to the upper grades, you're looking at probably two or three longer, more sophisticated pieces of writing. And then there's lots of opportunities, starting in kindergarten all the way through. Kids have writing partners. In some classrooms, the writing partners stay the same all year. Some of them switch after each unit, but they learn how to talk to each other about writing and how to listen to each other when they're doing their writing.
A typical writing workshop includes a 10-minute mini-lesson, 40 minutes of work time, and 10 minutes of sharing. This is what's consistently used in each of the classrooms in special education and general education. So with that predictable structure, kids know what's coming next. They know how to anticipate. anticipate what they're going to be doing for writing, because it's a routine they're familiar with. A mini-lesson begins with a teacher drawing students into the lesson using a mentor text, a sample writing piece written by that teacher, or a student sample. Students will see their teacher adding to their own writing, taking away from their writing, changing their writing during a demonstration. Next, the students will engage with their peers in partnerships, and they will do some thinking and talking about their task, then they're off to write.
So how does it really change from the beginning of a unit till the end of the unit? So we decided to look at two big areas, how you hook a reader and how you end a piece. So the first piece you look at, and I know we're not going to read it to you, but you can see, this is their first attempt at a beginning of a piece of narrative writing. And just looking, you can see there's no dialogue, it pretty much is a recount of something that's happened. There was no real craft to get the writer or the reader interested in the text. After instruction, you can see that now there are paragraphs, there's dialogue, they're balancing the dialogue and the action, so that they really set up, who are the characters, what's the setting, and get the reader interested in the text. And I think that's a pretty dramatic, and this is a fourth-grade example, so where they start and what they're able to do just in a very short period of time. And the other thing that we work a lot on is endings, and we don't want it to just be that, that Laura picked, "The end." So if you look at this student, pretty much, and so, you know, fourth grade, it took us a few days, but then we chose the name peanut. It kind of just ends. You don't have a sense of them really crafting an ending, thinking about how they're going to end it. Starting in third grade and all the way up, we try to get them to think about tying their end to their beginning, which is a pretty sophisticated skill. So if you look at this one, it's a different story, but just the idea that they would write "to be continued," this is someone thinking about where they're going, the level of dialogue, the, you know, they've got paragraphs, they understand who's speaking, they've really crafted an ending, it didn't just end because they ran out of paper or they didn't know what else to say.
Conferencing takes place while students are working independently on their writing pieces. Teachers meet individually or with partnerships or a small group during conferences. The conferences occur regularly and are an opportunity to set the next task up on a more individualized basis. Sometimes a teacher might conference with a student and then leave them to meet with somebody else, return to them during the same work time to see how they're making their progress. Teachers might also celebrate a student for doing a great job on one part of the task, and then ask them to work with another student also working on that part. Conferences are also used to assess student progress and determine groups of students with similar needs and form some positive peer partnerships. There are a variety of means of assessing both informally and formally throughout the writing units. On-demand writing samples means that students are asked to sit and write a new piece about a specific type of writing before and after the unit. Students use a self-assessment checklist throughout the writing process, and this is a tool that outlines the requirements of the task with boxes for students to checkmark their progress. As they move through the writing, their piece of writing, they'll check "not yet," "starting to," and "yes" when they've completed the task. Student progress can be informally assessed frequently during these conferences. And, oops, I skipped over rubrics. Rubrics are divided into three sections, structure, development, and language conventions. This is filled out by the teacher, and it's based on a point system, which is consistent across the grade levels. So additionally, teachers can now compare the growth that students are making across grade levels from year to year because the rubrics are consistent. And I didn't properly introduce Lauren Bowerman, she's our 4-5 skills class teacher, and I also wanted to give a quick shout-out to our Glenmont faculty. Could you raise your hand? Thank you so much for coming tonight. So how's it going? One of the most important things that we do whenever we implement a new initiative at Bethlehem is to try to support the teachers however we can. So we've made an effort to send teachers and administrators to workshops down at Teachers College, which you can imagine can be rather expensive, so we don't do it that frequently, but those teachers bring back that information to share. Teachers College hosts two Saturday kind of open houses with fabulous presenters. They're free, and Jody Monroe's kind enough to arrange her bus transportation to bring down as many teachers as we can. We have Val Falco, our literacy coach, who works two days a week. As a literacy coach, three days a week, she's in the classroom teaching third grade, and she provides professional development for our teachers. Last year, it focused more on getting to know the units, learning how to break down the lessons, how to confer, things like that. This year, she's doing some demo lessons. So for example, tomorrow, she'll meet with the fourth-grade teachers across the district, and then she will go and teach a fourth-grade class while the teachers watch her, and then they'll go back out and talk about how it went and what they learned. She provides after-school groups and workshops, book study groups, all kinds of things after instructional time, and she also provides individual support as requested by the teachers. So maybe a teacher needs a little extra help with conferring, she can meet one-on-one with them, provide that guidance. Jody Monroe has also provided a literacy camp for teachers, coordinated this every August, and it's a great opportunity for our teachers to come in and learn about different ways to teach reading and writing. And we have outside speakers, we have our own faculty members present on things that they feel that they're very skilled at, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to refresh our skills and get to learn new things. And finally, we have these writing kits, which you can see are quite thick, and that's just one-grade level. So there's a lot of material and support within the writing units themselves for our teachers. Now I'm going to pass the mic to Andy Baker, who's our K-12 language arts supervisor, to talk about the middle-school approach.
Thanks, Laura. And I too, as ELA supervisor, I'd like to thank Ms. Heffernan, Ms. Falco, Ms. Bowerman for presenting tonight, all the teachers, for the work that they've done over the last two years to implement these units successfully in the classroom, and they really have been great. And in terms of the middle-school, pretty much everything that was stated already applies to what we do. There are differences, and I don't necessarily want to go through what they might look like, but I will mention that, you know, in general, this is our first year in sixth through eighth grade. You can imagine with all the different teachers and all the different grade levels, one of the things with writing that this has brought us is just this coherence of instruction, the rubrics that have accountability and feedback given to students that's specific and calibrated, that students really know, you know, where they are as writers, where they need to go, and the teacher guides them and helps them to move in that direction. So they've been very successful. The sixth-grade teachers actually have reported to me throughout the year the difference they've seen in students coming in from fifth grade, having done the units and having had the instruction. It's workshop teaching, but because of the nature of the teaching and the fact that, you know, everything is aligned to that students, what they do today builds on what they're going to do tomorrow and vice versa, really that elegant design has really contributed, we think, to having students be much more successful and confident in their writing. Just today, an eighth-grade teacher told me that a student reported to her that, and I didn't even tell these guys this, a student actually said that they felt, you know, they felt more confident to be able to begin a writing task and felt that they had kind of a bigger repertoire of skills, so to speak. And I think that really is a testament to the instruction and the quality of the instruction. So we're pleased to have them, and it's been very successful this year in the middle-school as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. Heffernan, maybe questions, I'm not sure.
Let me show you the video, and then we'll take any questions.
Writers, I know that you did a whole bunch of experiments with a ramp and a car, correct?
Yeah.
So tell me what you had to do as scientists and writers to do that, I know what you had to do to do the experiments, but what did you have to do as writers with that experiment?
You had to like, report.
Well, what is a report of that experience? When you wrote a narrative, you wrote a beginning, you wrote a middle, you wrote an end, but I don't think that's what you did for this. What did you happen to do? No.
First, you draw all the materials on your first page, on the second page, you write your hypothesis, on the next page, you write your procedure, and then on the last page, you write your trials and results. And then you write your conclusion after.
So is your, is your conclusion ever different than what you thought might happen? Does that happen? Tom?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Your hypothesis may be wrong already.
So you're not sure before you start?
That's why you write a conclusion at the end, so if you're right, you write it down, it's wrong, you write it down.
Great. So everything you did in one experiment, and when you wrote one lab report, that's what you're going to do for the rest of your lives when you write lab reports. What you learned as second-grade scientist for lab reports, you'll be able to use when you're in high school. If you're a scientist in college, you can use that in college. You did exactly what all scientists do. So today, we're going to take what we learned about writing lab reports and doing experiments, and we're going to put it with a new experiment. What's the first thing we're going to do if we're going to be like a scientist, Evelyn?
Ask a question of how it works.
Okay, so right now, turn to your partner and ask them a question that you think you might want to explore with the catapult.
Fourth-grade writing program at Glenmont Elementary, Mrs. Ward and I work together. And last year, we were lucky enough to work with Val Falco and some other teachers in the district. So our students and their personal narrative have learned how to use a mentor text. That's a text that the teachers choose that have specific things in it that we want our students to model. We chose Tiger Rising, and the students modeled how the author used dialogue, how she had very careful word choice, and how the setting matched the general theme. So when the students were at the point where they were able to produce their own personal narratives, they incorporated many of these strategies. Thank you.
Students in Glenmont's fourth and fifth-grade skills classroom have used Lucy Cawkins' writing units with some modifications and assistive technology and have had great success. Writing production independence and confidence have increased, and it's prepared students to transition to the middle-school and potentially to less restrictive settings.
So this is our story arc. Ms. Martin gave it to me in my classroom, and what it is, is we will use all these different boxes, and we will write our beginning up and write our beginning in each box or page. Usually, each box is a paragraph, and we would write up until the middle box, and that's when the main event, or Ms. Martin would call it the heart of our story, would come in. And then as it gets lower, we're wrapping up and ending the story and telling all of our information, and then at the very end, we would write about how everything is like wrapped up and how it all worked out in the end.
This year in writing, I've learned two different ways to get the reader hooked into your story from the beginning. One of them is to start your story in the middle, so say you were at the doctor's office, you could start it there and then explain how you got hurt and why you were there. And then another one of the ways you could do it is you could hint what was going to happen, like, say you knew, say in the story you wrote, you knew something bad was about to happen, and then you say exactly what happened after a little while, so then the reader gets sort of like, "Wait, what's going to happen? I want to know what happens."
One way that we improve our writing is that we use better words. Instead of like "said," we say "replied." When we did narrative writing, Mrs. Martin used the mentor text, Tiger Rising by Kate DiCamillo, and it helped us a lot because Kate DiCamillo puts emotion into her setting, and it helped a lot of us bring that into our own writing.
And what we're finding with the writing program in kindergarten is that the kindergartners are doing more meaningful writing every single day. And an additional positive impact of the writing program is that the kindergartners are really becoming better readers as a result of writing every day.
One of the things I like about our new writing program is, I think it empowers all children to write, whether they're in kindergarten or fifth grade. The message is that you have a story to tell, an opinion worth writing about, or information to share with others. And whether they're drawing or dictating or writing, they know, even as five-year-olds, that what they have to say is important enough to write down.
Any question?
That was great. It really was. I'm really impressed with what they are doing. And two questions. One was in terms of, do they write on paper, like in cursive, or do they use MacBooks, or do they use both? If you're using MacBooks or whatever.
I would say that mostly in the K through 3, they're writing on paper. And then, starting in fourth and fifth grade, you would see them using laptops. Sometimes in third grade, they're using technology, but I would say the first round would be on paper. And I know you've done a lot more with.
Sure. The students in the intermediate skills class use a variety of means to produce their writing. Most of them start by drafting handwritten. In the classroom, they're using iPads, they're using computers with word prediction, they're using spell-check, a variety of different apps, just to get their ideas on paper. They're all ending by using a word processor of some sort.
So and then the second question is with the younger, you know, younger ones that are writing on paper, do you kind of use that whole language approach, you know, that we had years ago, so that they're getting their ideas down on paper, but it might not be spelled correctly, or the grammar might not be correct?
Early on, they're taught to listen for every sound, so I would say it's really a step above whole language, because they're encouraged to know, even in kindergarten, the heart words, where can they find them, so they spell them. I mean, it's not unusual in kindergarten for them to walk over to where the word wall is and look for "the" and the words they should know. So it's, I think there's a greater emphasis on spelling, and they know that things should be spelled correctly. That doesn't mean they sit there when they can't spell, but they're encouraged to listen for every sound, and I think that's, you know, it starts in kindergarten and they feel empowered.
That's great, thank you.
They also start in kindergarten with pictures. A lot of them just don't even know how to write letters yet, so they start with pictures, they move on to labeling their pictures, and then they start to write, you know, to match their pictures to tell their story.
I noticed on Slide 7, where you had sort of the different components of the process, that I think there was a 40-minute writing time, and I know that it's conferencing taking place during that time, but I'm a writer myself, but so I'm curious to know how that 40-minute block works with very young children. It seems to me, and I'm not a K through 5 educator at all, but that that's a long period of time for a child perhaps to write, so how do you find that works for younger children?
Well, initially, it's not 40 minutes. So the first writing workshop in kindergarten is probably about four. And they work their way up. And even in third grade, the first time we write, I write for 12 minutes, so everyone's successful. So the goal is to get to 40 minutes, and really, that 40 minutes is more, I would say, second through fifth. First grade probably is more of a 30-minute period, and kindergarten, we're thrilled when they get to 20 minutes, although often, they would keep going, so.
Wonderful, thank you. And then my other question deals with the middle-school. Mr. Baker, could you talk about how the team structure or how Mr. Baker, can you talk about how the team structure or how teams might work with the writing curriculum? I know that, I believe faculty are in teams, and they do team meetings. How does the writing program come up in that structure, if it does at all?
I mean, it's a great question. I think, I mean, it works similarly to K-5, where you have different teachers on the same grade level, and they're able to get together and collaborate. One of the things that we had this year that's been great, and, you know, I'd thank the administration there for putting together common planning time, that teachers are, have a period of day to meet by grade level. With our expanded teams, we have a couple of situations where not every teacher can meet because of the way the schedule falls for those teachers. You know, teachers that are part-time or less FTE. But in general, teachers are able to meet every day and collaborate. Most of them meet several times a week, if not every day. And we also have that time where they're able to, we have some embedded time that the teachers, that Ms. Monroe has given us for teachers to get together, plan, to have the meeting where they compare student work to sort of quote-unquote "norm" the papers. Part of the process that we didn't talk about was the idea of teachers getting together to look at the rubric and decide, you know, where students' papers fall and where their work falls on a rubric so that they can be consistent with the grading process and have that, you know, inter-rater reliability as they move through the unit. So the middle school functions a lot like the lower levels. One of the things is the, the time is not exactly the same. We don't exactly have 40 minutes every day just for writing. But we found that they've been able to take the time and make it work. Even 20 to 30 minutes of solid writing time is more than what some kids had been doing in the past. So we feel that that's a huge step forward. And, you know, with middle school kids, if we can focus that time and they can just get down to work, we feel that that's been productive. And some of the units of study are not pure to the genre. For example, in our eighth grade unit for narrative, it's actually an investigative journalism piece. So it's sort of a hybrid. The unit's kind of become a little more like hybrids, which I think is probably to try to get the kids a little more prepared to be doing maybe some literary analysis work in high school, and maybe trying to make it a little more interesting for the students as well, and give them a little more of a nuanced approach as they've developed these skills that they've gotten through all the years.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, Mike.
I wanted to share with you that I was in New York City this weekend, and we were out at dinner Saturday night with some folks. And one of the people was from Teachers College. And when she found out I was from Bethlehem, she got very excited because she said, "They're always amazed at the number of people we send down and how enthusiastic everybody is, especially to be giving up their Saturday to do this." So I just wanted to commend our staff for that enthusiasm. And I'm so excited by this program because I work in higher ed, and the writing level of students over the last 10 years or so has decreased considerably. And they don't understand the concept of revision and refinement in their writing. And I think part of it is because for too long in our schools, writing has been taught as a chore rather than as something you love. And so the emphasis on being positive in the critiquing and helping them to get excited about refining their work is so important. I had a mentor one time who said, you know, "When you write your first draft, always remember, your first two pages is just throat clearing." And I always think of that when I'm writing something because you find that you're just kind of making yourself look more important in the beginning. And by going back and refining the work and reviewing it, you can really make the language much more concise. So I'm so excited about this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Christine.
I was just going to also say thank you for this presentation. I have a fourth grader, so you've kind of demystified a little bit of what I see at home. I would also say, especially to the students here, that the high school kids, if you can learn to write well, you will be in high demand in the job market. And it doesn't matter what field you go into. If you can learn to write and write well, you will be in tremendous demand. I mean, I too quickly weed out folks on my team that aren't as strong writers and really go to the team members that I have on my staff when I need something written. It is a tremendous, probably very underrated skill. But the one question I have is, you know, we were at Eagle, and we learned about the presentation, you know, the remedial sort of math and reading programs that we have at Bethlehem. I was, I was watching this presentation and digesting it and thinking, are we thinking about contemplating some sort of development? Or do we have it already for those children, those students that need that extra help? How do we deal with that? Because this is, I mean, I could tell from your classroom, there are some kids that were, you know, raising their hand and very engaged and kind of got it. I mean, the one child, and we didn't...
We hated him.
I mean, he sounded like he was in like fifth grade or something. I just wondered, you know, what are we thinking about there? Or do we have something that we're already working on?
Well, one of the study groups I ran this year, and I'm continuing, in each kit, there's a book called an "if then" book. And it was largely geared for the special ed teachers. And they've come in and they've begun to make that "if then" book into a flip book for the children when they come to the resource room or need support for writing to help them see, if you're doing this, here are some things you can do that will help improve your writing. So through conferencing in that venue is one way, using the "if then." The other thing that came up just in the last round of workshops I was doing with teachers, they started to say, "Do you think we could meet?" We know what our goal for all of our students are, but there are those students who aren't going to make that benchmark. Could we get together and begin to look at what are the most important skills in each unit that we're going to work with those children who are struggling in writing on? So that was really a goal they brought up and will start to work on. So that's the two things that are at least in process now.
I have a couple of questions. I think this is for Andy first. How many years has the rubrics, the rubric been out? That you've been utilizing the rubric? You discussed...
The rubrics for the teachers, for the units of study? Well, those are, that's been implemented for the, for one year in the middle school right now, since the units of study are, have been for just this year in six-eight. But it's been two years, K-5. And of course, you know, we used rubrics before that were aligned and that were, you know, I think, to a large degree, vertical in terms of alignment of skills. But these are really coherent, really specific.
So the second part of that question is, do you utilize it? Can you look at it and maybe tell how somebody might do on testing at the end of the year based on the rubric during the year? Have you looked at that data at all?
We don't, you know, we don't have any, we don't really have any specific, like, you know, data or correlation studies in terms of predicting students' results on our TC rubrics and how they'll do at the end of the year. But I will point out that our elementary scores went up last year to the point that we, to the degree that we could pinpoint that to the writing units.
I just thought it would be interesting to see it maybe...
I do think there is a connection. I think that kids, when they, it was, you said in the video, they write, I think you said it, Val. You know, they write better, therefore they read better. These are integrated, related skills. The kids are reading more critically. I think it's just that the, that the instruction is so much more specific and with this grand design in place that really allows for a sequence of skills that I think does enhance how kids will perform on the state tests. Because the skills like critical reading and looking for the best evidence in our argument units, being able to write directly to the point, get to the point, have a claim and support it with textual evidence, those are all skills that are in our units, and those are all skills that are on the state test. And those are the ones that are worth teaching, not because they're on the test, but those are good skills.
No, no, I was just curious.
No, I agree, yeah. Unless you guys think there's something else I'm missing with that.
No, that would be interesting to look at. I would just be curious because if you could tell that early on, mid-year, from the rubric, if there was any correlation, it might be interesting to see.
Yeah.
I think we, we might be able to, to look at that more after this year because last year was the first year with the elementary. This year's the first year with six through eight. We may be able to start to see if there's any correlation.
That's why I asked how many years, because I figured if it'd only been early. My second question would be to Mrs. Falco. Do you feel that there's enough built-in time for conferencing during that 30, 40 minutes for each kid? I know that they'll independently write, and then you might work with them individually. Is there enough time built in to hit on...
Yes, especially because there's been a big emphasis on grouping children together. So if you're going to work on, you see three children in your class who have the same need, you would conference with the three of them together, and then with peer conferencing. So yes.
And my last question is, there's a heavy emphasis on nonfiction reading and writing. Do you find that the students are still engaged in writing about the nonfiction as much as the fiction work or whatever they want to write about?
They love nonfiction. In fact, I would say most of the kids like writing the nonfiction more than they like the narrative, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick question. I love the idea of the literacy coach, and when you guys did the presentation, I think it was it last year or the year before. Do you get to the other schools, or do the other schools have a literacy coach at the elementary level?
I go to all five buildings.
In that, plus teach half-time?
Yes. I meet with, I have a kind of standard teachers that I meet with, a kindergarten, each grade level, and I meet with them every other week. And then, I have two to four other teachers that I meet with every other week in those two days. And then run, I think we have scheduled three whole grade-level workshops.
We set up, well, obviously, I think we all would agree that more time would be great. I think that one of the things, aside from Val being, doing a great job in a lot of regards, but we also have, we set them up so that those schools were the site for that particular grade, which is then how we do the release time. So, for example, Glenmont is a site for K, and, is that the only, just K? And Slingerlands is a site for grade three. So that's how we kind of broke that up to make sure every building got, you know, for lack of a better word, a piece of Val.
Well, thank you very much. Very interesting.
Thank you.
And before, we have eagle pins that we give out to everybody who presents. Thank you, Dr. Douglas, and everyone for that presentation. Next is the Board of Education report. One thing I'd like to, I'd like to express our condolences to Kristin Burns, who had lost her husband a week ago today, very tragically in a snowmobile accident. I know many of us were able to attend the wake and the funeral on Sunday and Monday. So our condolences to Kristin and her family. Also, as we mentioned earlier, we had the, the governor did the State of the State today. You know, as Lynn had mentioned, the budget range is anywhere from $337 million to $1.4 billion, depending on what initiatives, other initiatives he can get through the legislature and change of policies and whatnot. So at the next meeting on February 4th, we'll have a better understanding, hopefully, of where we fall within that range and what night, what we might need from the community in terms of advocacy in working with our local legislators. And also, speaking of local legislators, at the last meeting, we had talked about the conservation easement, and we did not pass that. I had said at that meeting I would reach out to Assemblyman Fahy. I did have a brief conversation with her at a function I was at. And we plan on meeting with her and working with the town supervisor to see if we can somehow get the legislation amended so that it would be able to meet our needs in terms of a district and be able to provide that same type of benefit to the Town of New Scotland residents. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then, also, one other thing, since the last meeting, we had Congressman Gibson had given a speech at our attorney's office and had invited administrators and staff to that. And he spoke about what his agenda is going forward in terms of education and compromise and what needs to be done at a national level. So we'll stay tuned to that, especially since the State of the State, the State of the Union was last night too. So we'll see how that proceeds with additional funding that might be coming forth, so. Anyone else?
I made my comments earlier. I did appreciate this session with Congressman Gibson. He did talk about his support of local control of the curriculum and the pedagogy, and pledged to fight for resources to support that local control. And he also spoke about his concern of over-reliance on state testing. So this seems in line with some of the discussions we've had. I also wanted to congratulate the high school musicians. They were, they had conferences last week and I think the week before. Unfortunately, BMA and Mr. Norman are no longer here, the representatives. But I congratulate the faculty and Mr. Norman and the musicians on that. And lastly, I know that there's a corporate, corporate-sponsored track meet in New York City this weekend. And I believe that track team is sending select athletes to them, and I wish them well. It's at the New York City Armory. And there are very few athletes being, have been chosen, but we wish them well in that endeavor.
Okay. Moving on. Next, we have a presentation on English as a New Language Program by Dr. Marisa Bell. It's our Night of English.
Good evening. I'm Marisa Bell, and the supervisor of the English as a Second Language Program. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about a change in the commissioner's regulations for the English as a Second Language Program. But before I begin, I'd like to introduce our ESL teachers who are full-time. And we did have a part-time teacher wasn't able to make it. I think she's wrestling with the same cold that we all seem to be at various points with ourselves. But we have, our three full-time teachers are here with us tonight. Mrs. Kristin Bice, Ms. Stephanie LaJudas, and Mrs. Jennifer Goff are our full-time ESL teachers. So they're here as well this evening, so thank you for coming. The overview I'm providing you tonight is not really about the whole ESL program in terms of how the students are faring and where they come from and what types of students they are. But rather, we get to talk to you tonight about the new regulation. If anyone can't sleep tonight and you'd like to read it, I think it's only about 167 pages long. The proposal came out last May, and it was open for feedback for a while. And when it came out last May, that was actually a lot of my summer downtime was kind of filtering through and thinking, what would it mean if this came to pass? And then, the Board of Regents did pass the majority of it this September. And it is definitely a landmark legislative piece and change for them. But there are a couple of other pieces that have not been passed that are still pending. And so we'll review that as we go through. But first, just a quick overview of the program. This year, we have 61 ESL students in the program, and that is a 50% increase from last year. We had, over the years that I've been here, we've kind of trended up and down to a high peak of about maybe 83 students a few years ago before the economy slumped a little bit. And then, there was a drop down to, so that last year, we had just 40 students. And then, all of a sudden, this year, it shot up to where we're at, 61. Two new students joined this week. And that's actually a pretty similar trend that we've seen as other suburban council districts have seen as well. So we kind of do anticipate that it will continue to increase. The trick this year has been that a lot of them seemed to come in the last week of August and the first two weeks of September. So there's a lot of late influxes, and we've been adjusting schedules as every new student comes. We do a few adjustments. We, also, our students are doing well with the AMAO targets. That is shorthand for annual measurable assessment objectives, which means they're, they're basically doing well as a subgroup on their tests and assessment. And graduation, graduation rates are very strong as well. And at the elementary level, most of our students are served at Glenmont and Slingerlands. We moved a few years ago, you may remember, to serving those as kind of hub schools for our ESL students. So at that time, we grandfathered in any students who, at the time, were in a different student. So we have one student remaining at Eagle, who's a fourth grader, and another student in fifth grade being served this year at Elsmere, and she will move to the middle school next year. So just a very quick overview. You can see kind of a little breakdown of the FTE there and where the students are served. The top grid is, is where their homeschool is. So that made perfect sense to me when I drafted it, and then looked at it again, I went, that doesn't make sense. But that is where the students' homeschool is. So you can see that the largest populations are indeed at Glenmont and Slingerlands, and that's why those serve as the home schools. Most students are served in their home schools, by the way. There's a, maybe one or two students from Glenmont who are being served at Slingerlands, and one or two students whose home school is Slingerlands that are being served at Glenmont. And generally, that's because they came late in September and the class sizes there were full, so we, we had to do some, some switching there. At the secondary level, we have 24 students currently being served. Again, that's an upsurge. We had a big group of eighth graders that Ms. Beis nursed through middle school that came to the high school this year, so a big cluster of ninth graders this year who are doing very well and transitioned in very well. And you can see underneath that right now, we have, during the school day, we have two classes of ESL at the middle school for a .4 instructor there. And that, and that works because we have no really beginner students. If we were to get a beginner student, then we would possibly, wouldn't work so well. So that's kind of, if you remember from previous presentations, the students are grouped as beginner, intermediate, and advanced, and we try to serve them as beginners serve together, intermediate students serve together, and sometimes we'll combine intermediate and advanced depending on the student's level. And the same thing happens at the high school. Ms. Beis works there this year with four classes. Three of those are focused on supporting the students in learning English as a new language. She also serves as the ELA teacher for some of those students. That occurs as well at the, at the elementary and middle school level. And there's one class a day that's a structured study hall, so most of the ESL students will come back. And during that time, it's, let me relax, they'll eat lunch, but they're all working, and then that's the time that they'll come over and ask her questions and say, what about this? And I think we were working with a student last week who was trying to get ready for a volleyball quiz and wanted to know what court was and what's a serve, and so she and I were acting that out for the student who'd recently arrived from Israel and had not played volleyball before. So that's a good supportive time for those students. So you can see that the Board of Regents just changed the law in September, and it was previously called Part 154-1. It is now 154-2. There's also a 154-3 and 4 pending. So three and four are pending, so there's kind of just a little bit of, of legal aspect there for you. So as we go through most of these slides, the older kind of existing regulations that are current until the end of this year is on the left side, and on the right side is the revised regulation that go into effect as of September of 2015. So that's what, the, the teachers and I have been meeting an awful lot, trying to figure out, what would this look like? What does this mean for our students? How do we make this work? And so we're still in discussions with Ms. Monroe and Dr. Douglas on how does this work? And we actually started a group of ESL supervisors this year in the Capital District. There's about maybe 25 of us that meet periodically every month, same kind of conversation. What does this mean? How would it work? How do we implement this to our students' advantage? So the one kind of fun change is that I'm no longer an ESL supervisor, I'm an ENL supervisor. They changed the name of the program to English as a New Language, which makes sense for many of these students. English is actually the third or fourth language, so that's kind of the, the thinking behind that. And you can see that we'll have a number of requirements regarding meetings, documentation. There's pretty stricter timeframes now for when we have to place a student in a, in a district. Is it a tentative placement? The parent can ask us to review that placement. So there are some more documentation and guidelines along those, along those parameters, and those are fairly straightforward for us to implement. The professional development one is interesting. That's pending, so that's, I think, 154-3 or 4. And that is actually pending, so we're waiting for the Board of Regents to say that, yes, that's how this will work. There, what the actual discussion point is whether we can apply for a waiver to, if you have less than 5% of your total ENL population, if your ENL students are less than 5% of your total population, then as a district, we can apply for a waiver, an annual waiver each year. Otherwise, all of the teachers in the district would need to get professional development every year on serving the needs of ESL students. A few other changes, and there's a little bit of lingo up here. So the one that's interesting and where the top one is kind of an interesting one, and a lot of times we're sitting in these meetings as ENL supervisors and we realize what the ramification is of the proposal, we're like, how is that going to work? What are we going to do for that? And the very first one is, is one of those we really have not fully sorted out. The Home Language Questionnaire is a document that all parents are given at time of registration, and it asks for that, the parents to identify that the child is listening to, speaking English as a, excuse me, another language besides English at home. And if a student, if a parent indicates the yes, then we begin the process of evaluating the student for the needs of ENL services. In the past, and what we've, we've done very successfully, to be honest, is had a process where our registrar gives that at, at time of registration to all families, and then she and I communicate if we get what we call a positive HLQ. The proposed change is that, that, that process should be overseen by a teacher who is certified and trained in cultural competency. And the rationale behind that is to be careful to not misidentify or miss students who should be receiving ENL support, which does happen. It does not happen often here in my tenure, here of 10 years. I think that we have missed two or three students, that a parent has not either filled that out fully, and then, but then we're really able to work with the families and go back and offer support if we need to. But the intent of that change is to make sure that we're not missing any, any students during the identification process. The SCIF is also going to have an impact for us. That's Students with Interrupted Formal Education is what that stands for. And the impact there is going to be that our evaluation process will be longer. We're now going to be required during that identification process with the students to identify what their level of math is in their home language and their level of literacy in their home language. And that's another one that we're kind of all scratching our heads about, like, how are we going to do that? We do think that there will be a higher cost associated with that in terms of interpreters and that, to help us with that piece, and probably some summertime for teachers to do that evaluation piece over the summer. So that will be more time consuming. We're hoping that the state will give us a little bit more guidance on some evaluative tools that we could use, because right now, they don't exist. But right now, there's supposed to be a, a guidance document coming from State Ed, and it's late. So we're hoping that they get that to us in the next few months, and we can try to figure out some of these challenges that we're being faced with. Let's see, there's nothing else there that I think will have a great ramification on us, the, the last two pieces there, that those are types of things that we will just have to kind of keep in our mind. This is a provisional placement until we go through that evaluation piece, and then it's, becomes the final placement. So the top one here on this particular slide is, it will have an impact when implemented, and that is that we are, we usually, at the elementary level, will serve students in individual grades, but in the middle school level, we tend to group students in six, seven, eight, and at the high school level, nine through 12. And the regulation now says that we cannot group students within, they have to be within two contiguous grades. And that's going to be a challenge in terms of, of how we will group students. And what's a little bit frustrating in this particular piece of it, I wish it said two contiguous proficiency levels, because we might be in a situation of putting a beginner sixth grader with an advanced sixth grader, because that's just how it works out that we have to do, so, but there are very different levels of proficiency, whereas now we cluster the beginners as a group and the intermediate and advanced students as a group. And so we're not quite really sure how that particular piece will play out. That's going to be an interesting one to implement and to make sure that we're really serving the students in the way that will best help them to learn English. A couple other things that you'll see, and I, and I don't want to belabor this point because I'm pretty sure if I went over this whole PowerPoint in detail, we'd be here for another hour. So there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of detail here. The levels of proficiency have changed, so now we talk about beginners, intermediate, and advanced students and proficient, and they change those names to, there's five levels moving forward, and they're kind of called emerging, entering, commanding. So they just change the names. So that'll be kind of fun to try to figure all that out and change our own vernacular next year. And the other thing is that once students test proficient, we used to call it, now commanding, they, it used to be that we would monitor them for two years, but now the new requirement is that they will need to get some sort of service. And right now, the regulation reads either a half credit of service or other services to be determined by State Ed, and that's one of those pieces. We're really waiting for the guidance document to be more explicit on what that other service could look like. The other thing, I guess I shouldn't, probably easier if I mention on this, on a future slide, the types of ESL service. The one last piece here that I think, just to make a note of, is we're waiting for the special ed piece to come through, but there are some additional exit criteria that we could use. And if they do approve that in the next month or two, we do have some students who, because of their learning disabilities or other special education needs, have a very hard time testing proficient and then out of mandated ESL services. And sometimes it is not because of their home language needs, but really, it is their special education needs that make it very difficult for them to pass that English test that we give them each spring to see where they are. So we're hoping to get a little bit of help for those students in that area. So the financial impact is what Ms. Monroe and Dr. Douglas and I have been talking about quite a bit, especially as we start the budget process. We do know we'll, we'll be asking probably for some additional funds for interpreters, and that is for additional meetings with families, more documents that will need to be translated into the language, the, the way that it's termed in the document is the language that is best understood by the parent, so often their home language, but not necessarily. But we'll need to find out from each family which language they prefer to be communicated with in terms of writing and then interaction. So sometimes they can read English, but, but it's more difficult to process in a second language during a spoken interaction. So we do see that there'll be increased need for interpreters next year, as well as additional FTE for some of the instructional pieces, and that's what we'll talk about next. So the, the way that then moving forward, the ESL instruction will be working is there'll be a stand-alone, which is what we used to call pull-out, and that's the primary model we have been using. And each student, based on their proficiency level, is required to get either stand-alone or you can see the second column, integrated ENL with ELA, or the third column, integrated ENL with the content area. The intent of this portion of the law is to help students learn content with ESL strategies. And so those of you that, we've been around for a while, may remember that several years ago, we had one year where some students were not making targets, and Dr. Tobano and I were really looking closely at why that was. It may, must have been about seven years ago or so. And, and the thing that we were identifying was that the, the pull-out instruction was very strong, but in the content classrooms, we needed to improve on helping the students really get a handle on the content. And, and so we kind of, we put in a few structures and we implemented some, some different processes to help with that. And we've made progress in that area. But my understanding is that statewide, that does not always happen. Our teachers, as you could hear tonight, are very well-trained in the Common Core, and our ESL teachers have really embraced the Common Core as their primary curriculum. And that's really, the ESL teachers do two things, is they'll teach students English, you know, idiomatic expressions, grammar, vocabulary, but they also are teaching students ELA, and that is completely aligned with the Common Core now in ESL. So the intent is basically to try to help students make progress and to learn content with ESL appropriate strategies. So you can see that the certification requirements will be a little bit different. Sometimes we'll be asked to have an ELA and an ESL teacher together teaching those, or it could be someone who's duly certified. So as a sample for what that could look like, and again, this is one of those grids that makes perfect sense to me. The top level in green is the level of student proficiency. The next level that says required units, those are the mandated, you could just think of a 40-minute class, that's the mandated classes that New York State says. So for an example, a beginner student needs to have two classes a day of ESL support or instruction. And then underneath that, it says what it needs to look like. So essentially, you know, the beginner student would get one period a day of stand-alone and one period a day of integrated ELA. So that's kind of, kind of in a nutshell, something that's actually fairly complex, but you can see that we now need to break that type of instruction down across five levels and try to figure out how to do that. And then the proposed classes that we would need if implemented are the sixth, seventh stand-alone and then a seventh, eighth stand-alone because of that requirement of only being able to group students in two contiguous grades. So it's been something of a logic puzzle to try to figure out what student could go with the other student in which grade, and it's kind of like playing Twister with kids' schedules a little bit. But we would anticipate an FTE increase at middle, elementary, and high school to implement this. The elementary level, we would recommend staying at the two, the Glenmont and the Slingerlands as housing. To implement this, however, if you kind of think that we would need a stand-alone and an integrated ENL/ELA in six classrooms, so sixth kindergarten, first second, all the way through fifth, then there could be potentially 12 classes a day, and so we would need to hire a part-time, a full-time teacher to work part-time support in Glenmont and part-time support at Slingerlands to really try to implement that. One of our ESL teachers is duly certified in elementary ed and ESL, and that does help with flexibility of scheduling. High school projection, another one of these kind of grids, but basically, the nutshell is that you can see that a number of, the numbering got thrown off a little bit, but it looks like nine different types of courses that if this is what we would project, we would need. And if a student were to arrive, like you can take a look at this and see, there's no beginner ninth graders projected that we have for next year, but a student could come in July and be a beginner ninth grader, and then that would necessitate adding another course under this model. So there's a possible increase of a 1.0, just at the high school alone, to implement this, which is quite a challenge. And we do have some ideas of how we could combine classes. Mrs. Beis had some great ideas about, well, maybe it wouldn't be that the ESL teacher goes and pushes into the content area class in ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. Maybe we could bring a history teacher into the ESL classroom and do kind of a, a global history, integrated ENL, you know, type of class. So we're kind of still talking with and brainstorming some ways to make this work well for us and work well for the students. Overall, the estimated FTE increases is, is, you know, significant. Just to explain the box with the elementary level there, it says 2.2 plus .2. That, that .2 is being hired right now. One of those situations where we did have a new student show up, a fifth grader who was a beginner, and we did not have any other beginning fifth graders in the district that we could fold him into that group. So he became his own group with his own need, and hence a .2. And that, you know, could happen in another month that a, we don't have a lot of third, fourth, or fifth graders. Those types of things do happen when we get new students unexpectedly. But you can see that the overall FTE increase would be tangible from this year to next year. And I think that, that pretty much gives an overview of at least the, the legal aspect of it and some of the challenges. The students themselves, I can say, they're a lot of fun to get to know, always very appreciative of our work in being here, and they run the gamut generally from the first few months, sometimes frustrated and resentful that they've all of a sudden found themselves in the United States because of a, a parent's job change or a life change. But usually by this time of the year, they, it's nice to see smiles and see them really enjoying their classes and having acclimated to whatever school they're in, having a lot of fun. So I get to, to visit the classrooms quite a bit, especially at the high school, I'll wander down at a high school in those schools and visit quite a bit. So I get to know the, the students as we see them through the years.
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Yes.
You, you mentioned 61 students.
We do.
Currently, how many different languages do they represent? I mean, if you don't have it exact, but.
I don't. We have a lot of Chinese-speaking students, a lot of Japanese-speaking students, a lot of, several Spanish, but not as many as in years past.
Six to 10 languages.
Six to 10 languages. It was at one point, I remember counting 19 a few years ago. Kristin's saying 11. So around, let's say, let's round it up to a dozen.
Which actually adds to the cost where, if you have to do those questionnaires by each language and hiring people.
The questionnaires that are available, like the, if we had to translate, when we have, when we have to use the translators, what does happen is the translators of lower incidence languages tend to be more expensive because they're, they're in higher demand. So when we translate into Arabic and there's So, when we translate into Arabic and there's fewer Arabic speakers to help us, sometimes those costs can, can add up. Some of the general documents we use, like that, or that initial home language questionnaire is already translated into most of those higher incidence languages, but...
Is that something that Bosie's offers as a service or...
We're, we actually, Marisa and I attended a meeting that was hosted by Bosie's, and I know Bosie's has talked about and is trying to organize some supports for local districts for this. Again, as Marisa said, there's still a lot of questions about the regulations and, you know, the guidance document is supposed to help clarify, and there's still pending things. So, I think that they certainly, one of the things that came up in Bosie's meeting was the interpreters and things like that, that they could assist with in districts, rather than having everyone recreate the same things, you know, let's do it shared, so it's less expensive and less time-consuming for everyone.
Plus, I have to believe there's a shortage of people qualified to do this.
Absolutely, right.
If everybody, all districts are going, going to have to do this, I don't know where we're going to find all the people.
And the new requirement actually beefs up the requirements for the types of interpreters supposed, that you're allowed to use. So, it's supposed to be someone who can simultaneously interpret and has been trained in confidentiality. So, they even made that language more strict. So, we'll need to be framing, you know, maybe a confidentiality type of, of training for the interpreters that then we bring on.
Lynn, I, I think you bring up a very important point, and the, the capital region superintendents have, have been meeting on this over the past month because we already know in New York State, and I want to thank Dr. Diedrich because he is going to be going to talk with the Board of Regents about this potential unfunded mandate in regulation now that really is something that cannot be put into place at this current form. Not because there's not a need, but there is a certain need definitely in part of this state, but using a couple examples. In New York State, there are roughly about 100 graduates that would be eligible for this potential certification. Now, we've already done a study. If we would need potentially 2.4 up to maybe three to 3.4 staff members, that's about a $250,000 to $300,000 dollar cost to the district that isn't anticipated from this mandate. Now, if you take North Colony, they've already estimated, they need 5.6. Gilderlin needs five at $500,000. So, between the three districts alone, we would need roughly about 13 to 14 of the potential graduates, and that's only three out of 100, out of 700-plus districts. We're hoping that there's going to be a much more relaxed phase in time. This is sort of similar to a mandate like the elementary physical education mandate, that it's a mandate and requirement and regulation, but yet schools are incapable of meeting it, especially now because of the fiscal realities. That's going to be something that we may have to look at in the budget, but we also may have to take a look at the position of the Board in relationship to that regulation on whether or not this unfunded mandate is appropriate at this time, and that, that's a hard position to be. Our ESL teachers do a wonderful job. Do we have areas that we could do better? I think Dr. Bell has indicated, yes, and, and we can always improve. But, you know, I was in Mrs. Legudis's classroom today. We're doing great things here to help our students succeed and integrate in very difficult settings, and, and that's through their hard work. But what happens is, we are also becoming very successful at it for our population. We don't have the biggest populations that other districts may have in different regions of the state, which this was primarily intended for. So, you know, there's going to be some discussions. Do we lower class sizes so that students that of, of a nature that need additional help in ESL or ENL, as it's going to be called, have lower class sizes so they get more one-on-one time in the native language and so forth? It's going to be a juggling situation that I believe all the superintendents and all the schools are going to be having that discussion as we go through because honestly, we just don't physically see how the fiscal reality is going to merit out with this as a, this as a major unfunded mandate that's being put down. Good intentions, but in the reality of what's going on and class sizes, it sort of combats each other.
I have a problem with one size fits all.
Yeah.
Because obviously, someone needed to have these changes, but my feeling is, if you have a successful program, why, why do you have to make all these changes? I mean, if you're always continuously improving anyhow, it, it seems, you know, seems very costly, especially in times when we've already cut so many, you know, positions the last couple of years, and now having to perhaps add some that maybe we really don't need because we have a successful program.
I mean, I can see, I think that if we have economies of scale, when you have large groups of ESL students, then you, you're able to implement some of these classes more efficiently. But I wouldn't say that we, that our students wouldn't benefit from the social studies teacher and an, and an ESL teacher collaborating on a more regular basis. So, I, I mean, there is a good deal of value in that. I think it'll be a balancing act for us to figure out how to implement it to our students' best interest and still do that in an economical way.
It, it, it's like with the, the co-opting of the groups being only one category apart, we may not be able to do something like that. I mean, our intent is, we're going to try to assist the state as best we can with the regulations, but we may have to sort of like PhysEd, have outs and so forth, where, you know, we may have to use two grade levels, or, or as you said, Dr. Bell, within two performance levels to try to develop the best plan for our students, for our programs, but it, it's ultimately going to come down to a balancing. I think with the budget, now that I'm seeing some things on aid runs and so forth, we're probably going to end up building a budget in the dark and then at the last minute, bringing the sunlight to it, so to speak. And, and this is something that we at least know about, we can prepare for, but it's something that we can't just necessarily guarantee as easily.
I wasn't clear when the reg, the new regs actually take effect. You have 2014, 15 in here. I mean, does it take effect the school year coming up?
The school year coming up, so...
So, September...
Well, actually, July 1st.
Okay, July 1st.
This summer. So, once the new students start to register July 1st, we should be implementing some of those, especially those documentation and 10-day placement and, and some of those aspects starting in July.
And all of what you went through today are changes that take effect July 1st?
That's correct.
Okay. It's pretty sobering, especially given what you opened with, Matt, which is, you know, here we are again looking at tough times, yet wham, you get a big new mandate imposed on you that districts around the state, no matter what their, you know, their student numbers, are going to have to jump through hoops. I mean, I can appreciate some of your comments of, we're trying to figure out exactly what this means, what the impact is. I mean, it's, it's utterly ridiculous. I mean, I have no doubt that some of the changes are well-intentioned, and probably some of them, if, if, you know, funding were not an issue, are probably great changes. On the other hand, you know, how do you just, you know, 5.8 FTEs? I mean, how do you just magically do that?
Snap your fingers.
Yeah. I mean, it's utterly ridiculous.
Exactly, especially the grade level. I mean, if you, you might have, you know, three students, and now you have to have two teachers because they're first, second, and third.
And, and one of the things... One of the things that we have to be very careful about is, say you put in every regulation, now we have two different kids that come in, that could be all of a sudden, a brand-new half-teacher because of where they sit.
Right, right, right.
So, this could be anywhere right now, just simply looking at 2.4, it could be up to 3.4 to four, depending on what our population does over the course of the year. And it's not that you can build the budget for that because of the fact that you don't know with a crystal ball who's going to move into the district.
Kind of like special ed. It's like special ed.
Are you looking at condensing any of the levels? So, you have five levels. Do you have to have five levels? Could you go to four levels? Would that make a difference in FTEs? Sometimes, I'll go back a couple of slides because it, it looks as though perhaps students couldn't be served together by levels, but they could be. So, for example, your standalone class here could have in it, and we do have a standalone ENL class this year, and it has, we group it this year by beginner and low-intermediate students in 912. That's how it's currently grouped, but next year, it would be beginner, intermediate, advanced in 910, and then a separate class for the 1112. So, it's a different type of grouping, and it has some merits and it has some costs.
And then my second question is on the proficient, commanding students. Do any of them, the students decline the transitional two years of LAP test?
I don't know where that was, slide was. Students are...
They're entitled to two years.
They are entitled to two years. There's not an opt-out for ENL at all, so students, parents are not able to opt-out of the program, and neither are students. What we do allow students to do is there's testing accommodations that they're entitled to for the two years after, you know, separate location, extended time, use of a translator glossary, and they, we do allow students to work with us on which of those they feel would be more helpful for them at the, at the older levels. The high school students will say, you know, I'm comfortable with that, and if the teacher knows them. Every so often, we'll have a student who doesn't want separate location, but we know really would benefit from it, and so sometimes we'll just, we'll work that out generally with the student.
Thank you.
May there be none? Yeah, Lynn. Jody, did we file a report with, you know, after the Regents, you know, put it out to the field for input, did we send something in?
One other thing, at this meeting we attended, it was actually, I'm not sure, I can't remember who the woman was, was she from...
Krista Chaika.
Right.
From Arburn, which is like a support organization.
Right. So, she and Bosie's were working on collecting that feedback from districts of concerns, just the logistical pieces, you know, the, the certification is, issue is a huge issue. Currently, that would basically, you know, for some schools, that would mean those current ESL teachers would not be actually able to continue in that position because they're not properly certified. And then that cultural competency, you know, no one really has an answer. So, that, you know, that, the purpose of that meeting was to actually gather concerns from districts on these regulations or questions that districts had, and they were taking that back to State Ed and through Bosie's on, you know, this, these are the major concerns. And I know the superintendent groups has also been expressing real concern, and the Bosie's meeting I was at the other day, this came up, and there is some, I don't know if it's legitimate or not, some sentiment that State Ed may back off on this to some degree, or provide some variances or a timeframe to implement this because they're hearing a lot of concerns from districts about just the sheer cost and, and the logistics of actually being able to hire certified teachers for this.
Well, in December, I'd been at a meeting with Board members from around the state and the Commissioner, well, our former Commissioner now, was his final public engagement, I think. But anyhow, listening to some of the same input, and I know I'd asked you for information, which I also used, in explaining some of the issues with this. And so, I was hoping that when he heard some of those concerns from, you know, from other people, that, you know, that Ken Wagner was there too, so to take that information and use it. So, I was hoping that either they would slack off on...
Or maybe provide waivers for, if they, if the intention was for schools, school districts that have huge populations or inflexible students, you know, we have the students coming in from, you know, Mexico, South America, that, you know, that they would focus there more than, you know, on... Or for school districts who their students are not performing well, you know?
Right.
That, they're, those students are not being successful, I think, but, you know, it's, everyone gets the same burden.
Put the regs in for the students that needed to assist them. Unfortunately, I think that's, I don't want to say fallen on deaf ears, but it, it, it really has fallen that the field gives the comments, but then it seems like it gets pushed through anyways, and that's the difficulty. I know just as late as last week, they put out an ELL survey, an ENL survey question that the superintendents were asked to fill out on their thoughts, so we were surprised that that came out after the fact. So, it does look like that they may, they may be reconsidering some timeline options, which has been their case, is when they adjust by timeline, not necessarily regulation.
Anyone else?
Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bell. And we have an eagle pen for you, too.
I haven't gotten one. What's going on? Nobody's gotten pens. I know.
Thank you for coming. All right. We have about 10 minutes. I think we probably get through the rest of the agenda and then let the pig students go after that. At this time, we would recognize any visitors who would like to address the Board on any agenda item. Anyone like to address the Board? Okay. Next item, item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. And number C is the BMA donation we got, and also number B is a donation from the Elsmere PTA to defray the cost of the second and third-grade field trip to the Palace Theater. So, we thank both organizations for that. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions at item carries? Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through E.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number...
10.
Oh, yeah. Support personnel, item 10. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through I.
So moved.
First and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 11. Correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items, action item A.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 12. At this time, we would recognize anyone who would like to address the Board on any non-agenda item. Being on, we'll move on. Item number 13, future meetings and events. The next meeting is Wednesday, February 4th. That will be at the High School Library Media Center. Will start at 6:00 PM with the executive session, 7:00 PM public board meeting. At that, the board meeting that night will be the state of the schools, Dr. Douglas will be doing, and hopefully, we'll have an initial kind of assessment where we stand with the budget. After that is Wednesday, February 25th, is the meeting, second meeting for February. That, again, will be at the High School Library Media Center at 6:00 PM for executive session, 7:00 PM for public meeting. Again, budget topic will be transportation operations, maintenance, and technology. I would just note for the public that that is the fourth Wednesday of the month. We normally meet the first and third, but the third Wednesday is our school break week, so we'll be meeting the fourth Wednesday. I know myself, I will not be able to be at that meeting, so Charmin, you'll be chairing that. And then March 4th is another meeting after that, the Library and Media Center. Again, the budget topics will be athletics, special education, and student services. There is no need to go to executive session. If I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. It's first and a second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Pig students, you can come up and sign.